Okay, at seven o'clock we start the meeting. Welcome to the Board of Ed meeting. We're happy to have you here and appreciate any input or ideas you have to share with us. The agenda for the meeting is available. The first meeting, and I know this is crazy, this is July 27th, but this is the first meeting of the month in July. We'll get back to a more likely scenario starting next week. The board discusses and votes on items on the agenda. If you have questions about these items, please speak with a board member after the meeting. The public comment section is your opportunity to bring issues to the board, ask questions, make comments. We appreciate your presence and ideas and ask that you try to limit your remarks to no more than five minutes on a given topic. The executive session is the portion of the meeting where the board discusses legal, personal, and student issues. These matters are confidential. The board needs to meet privately for this portion and the public is excused. After our executive session, we convene, take action on issues discussed. You may return to the meeting at this time if you wish. Okay, so we'll get started. The first item on the agenda is the public comment section.
We moved it to discussion, so it's got.
Oh, okay. Okay, I hope, since we have one, the board member who is falling asleep in the district land, we've reordered the agenda to help him participate. So the first item that we have under discussion is the board self-evaluation. Some things were added to it today. I hope that people had a chance to look at them. There were three different approaches to the board self-evaluation. Have you got a chance to look at them, Scott?
Yes.
Okay. So discussion is open on people's feelings about which way to proceed using one or more of these approaches. So any comments from anyone is now open. Go ahead.
I like the first example that was provided by NISBA. I thought it was very thorough and I'd like the does the procedure need attention, yes, no, or I don't know. I thought that might be helpful.
Okay. Anyone else?
I also like that one.
Okay.
Their custom order retreats I do too. Please do that.
I have Sam. I would agree with him that I kind of like that as well.
Scott, do you have any input on that?
You kind of like NISBA and what was the second thing?
All three said they liked NISBA as an approach and Cheryl said that she liked the idea of a board retreat to deal with the results of the survey.
Yeah, I was okay with either survey from a self-evaluation perspective. It was okay with either one of those. I thought they were, they both covered a broad spectrum.
All right, so it appears we have a consensus on the NISBA approach, so why don't we plan on doing that one? I don't think we're going to have a vote on it since everybody appears to agree. It's just a really good survey. Okay, so are we agreed that we can have a vote? Okay, so the next point on the agenda is the board retreat. Question is, do you want to have a summer retreat and what would be the appropriate scenario of study?
Can I ask, if you did have a board retreat, what is the timeframe, dates, potential? I know that's probably after the fact, but if you had one in the past, when have you had them on Saturdays, one during the week?
They've been at different times, but usually during the week in the evening for three, four hours.
Right here at the school, I'm assuming then?
Well, we usually go elsewhere so we can have food attached to it. And so is there interest in doing that in August at some point? Yeah, I have interest.
It would be helpful. I don't know how the mission, vision, values was coming, but I could see that we, as a board, might need time to work specifically on that some more before we presented that to the district. But I looked at the convention that you suggested, Mark. I'm sure that I would have to teach both that Thursday and Friday of that convention.
What I think would be the obvious topics if you did have the retreat, which a few people appear interested in, would be the, both the vision question and the results of the survey that we will fill out.
Right.
And I can just tell you timeframe wise, the vision committee is planning on presenting to the board at the August 13th meeting. And so I'm thinking that it would make sense to have the retreat after that so that we could consider the latest iteration of the vision as well as go over, you know, and use that as a, you know, that August 13th meeting as a kind of a deadline to fill out the survey about the board self-evaluation. So is that timeframe after the 13th agreeable?
It's the 10th.
No, but they're presenting on the 13th.
The board meeting is the 10th.
Oh, sorry. Okay, so after the 10th then.
I think that would make a lot of sense.
Yeah, the week of the 14th to 18th.
Yep. Would that week, the 14th to the 18th be good for everyone?
Not for me.
When are you back?
The Saturday to the 19th, so I'm gone that week after.
So how about we, would it work for everyone the week after that?
You're talking about for August or what month?
Yes, August.
You're saying the 14th to?
Not the 14th.
No, after the 19th.
Oh, after the 19th.
So let's all look at our calendars and see if we can come up with a date.
I could do 21, 22, 23. 21, 22, 23.
Okay, August 21, 22, 23. Does anyone have any preference between those three dates? I'm thinking an evening meeting from like 5:00 to 9:00.
21st or 22nd would be my preference out of those three dates.
Any, anyone have any problem with those dates?
Yeah, yeah. I'm just checking my calendar right now. Probably any one of those if we're talking about the evening would work for me.
All right, so how about Tuesday the 22nd? Is that, is that agreeable?
Okay.
Yes?
Like 6:00 to 9:00 kind of timeframe.
Five, 5:00 to 9:00?
We usually have dinner for 5:00, right?
Yeah. Yeah, we usually have dinner at 5:00 and then have the meeting there after, usually from 6:00 to 9:00. Would that work for you, Scott?
Yeah, that's mine. I just was wanting to know what to book on my calendar.
Okay. So is that agreeable for everybody? Okay, great. So it'll be the 22nd, August 22nd from 5:00 to 9:00. And we've had it at the bowling alley in the past, you know, in their dining room in the back. Would that be agreeable?
Sure.
Yeah. Okay. So we'll check with them if that's available, but if not, we'll find someplace to meet and let you know.
That's great.
Okay. All right, next point is board committee. Okay, obviously there is one person in this list who is no longer a member of the board, so we need to fill those positions and/or reorganize any of the other positions based on people's preferences and desires. So what I think I would, first I would ask, do we just want to replace Carol's positions? Is that, or do people have other desires? Anyone fed up with their committee that they're on and want to leave? Okay. All right, so we'll go ahead and replace Carol. So first we have finance, which is, was Carol and Scott. Is there anyone interested in joining the finance committee?
The only question, or I shouldn't say question, thing that I think we should think about is that you would have, if we just replaced Carol with Chris, you'd have the two newest people looking at the finance with the least experience to it. Just something for us to think about.
Okay, well, I guess I would be willing to bite the bullet. I was on the finance committee previously and so I would, I would be willing to do that.
I'm very comfortable to stay on it. I just am concerned if it's just Chris and I and, you know, we have the least amount of experience dealing with it and having done it for my first year, there is a bunch that you have to learn. It's not just straight budgeting kind of stuff because of the funding models and things like that, so.
Okay, so I'll go on to the finance committee. What that would mean, I would, how do you go ahead?
The bottom. The bottom.
Okay, so the next one with Carol is the negotiations. Is there anyone interested?
I'm interested in that.
Okay. Is there anyone else that's interested in negotiations?
I actually would be interested in that.
There's one concern I had about that. I thought about this ahead of time, that, you know, being a husband of an employee of the district, that might, you know, kind of create an appearance of conflict of interest. So.
I could probably see that on one side, but on another side, we've got experience. I'm a negotiator right now on the administrative team where I'm at and the big thing that I look at for negotiations is just fairness. So I think I could easily refute that. It's just my own belief unless you think otherwise.
All right, so, well, we have two candidates. We'll just have a vote and that will resolve the question.
Sorry.
Okay, so it's Chris and also Rachel. So all in favor of Rachel? Raise your hand. All in favor of Chris? So that would be two, I would assume. And it's a tie.
I raise my hand on Chris.
Yep. All right, well, I guess I will break the tie and vote for Rachel. So Rachel will be on the negotiating committee. And then we have policy. Is there anyone interested in joining policy? Do you know what that is?
Yes, I do. I do. If there's no takers, I can go on policy as well.
Is that agreeable? Then we have scholarship. Are you both willing to remain there?
Sure.
Okay. And superintendent evaluation?
Everyone. Be on that.
I would agree with you.
And I guess that's it then.
So the others stay the same?
Yes. I'm assuming we were agreed that the others will stay the same or does anyone have anything to say about anything else?
Did you gain a committee and not lose a committee or less?
Apparently.
Yeah, Mark, you gained one and didn't get.
I'm only on two right now, so I'm a little light, so if there's.
Legislative liaison?
What exactly, I mean, I could, I could do that.
It's basically doing our IBCSD mostly around school funding and other school issues that have legislative connection.
Yeah, I could, I could jump on that.
Thank you for taking me off the board.
Yeah.
That's usually a committee that's most active in winter and early spring.
Yeah.
Okay, any other comments or thoughts about the committees?
Is that about equal?
Let's see.
And four.
All right. I mean, that's never exactly equal, but it makes like it's pretty well spread out. So I think we're, unless anyone is objecting to how many committees are on, I think we can just go ahead. One thing I did want to indicate is that, as we discussed in the earlier, the meeting earlier this month, there's a question of the curriculum committee, which we thought we should hold off to discuss when you're back. So I think we could put that off to the August 10th meeting and then put that on the agenda so we can discuss, discuss that issue. Okay? All right, so moving right along, we have Basset Health Services.
So in the notes, hold on just a second, let me get here. In the notes, we had put in the information, I thought we did. Oh, it's down, it's down underneath.
It's down under approval, I didn't move it up.
Right, we didn't move it up. Under the item for approval, we put the information, sorry, we just moved the discussion up, Scott, for you, about the Basset Health, their contract, which is the same one we've had for a number of years, is a flat rate of service plus then any physicals that they do. So we did attach the board policy, let me just get to that, that talks about how the school district will provide student physicals and we gave you the information on the physicals that we did last year. And there is, this is the only contract we have with them.
Don't we have a contract with the doctor?
No.
Okay, so is there any questions? Oh, first of all, I guess since this is a, something has to be approved, do I hear a motion to approve?
No, this is, no, this is just discussion.
Oh, okay.
So we put it up to discussion.
All right, we'll move to approve later.
Right, so we could answer everybody's questions.
All right, so are there any questions or discussion on this, on this item?
Yes, I still have questions. So I thought that Dr. Riley, am I getting the name right? I thought Dr. Riley had a role in our health, required health hierarchy, for lack of better words. I don't remember what it was called with the state, as the person that, the medical person at the top of that, and he got a fee for that. And that was approved separately in the last year. I don't remember when we approved that.
I don't either. I don't.
And that's where my question came up because in the Basset agreement, we're also approving for professional services. So it wasn't only the fee for the physicals per physical, I get that and I understand that. My question was, well, if we're paying for professional services here, but we're also giving money to the doctor for professional services, I question what professional services are we getting from Basset directly?
That is part of, two things. First of all, the Basset provides the medical services for any special education participation by the doctor. So that's part, that's not part of the physical or of the pre-employment physicals, that's part of the $5,000. And under number four is where they talk about specifically about the services that they provide. And we've used, what did we use Basset for last year? There was, I can't remember off the top of my head, but there are times when we've asked them for assistance with determining infectious disease policies and procedures and some of those other pieces of information. So number four outlines the services that they offer as part of the $5,000 fee in addition to the special education piece.
Okay. Do we have a separate contract with Dr. Riley directly?
No. Leah, Leah, please. We've never paid him directly for anything.
Okay.
Any other questions, Scott, or anyone else?
No, no.
Okay. Do you want to stick around for any more of the meeting or do you want to get to sleep?
Is there anything else that you feel would be advantageous for me to stay with?
Well, the only, the only other thing, the only other thing that is going on is we're hiring a number of people in the executive session.
Yeah, I read through the latest one and I, I agree, the latest revised version in board docs, and I agreed with your comment of the letter of recommendations and Patty sent those to us, or at least me, after I told her I still couldn't see them. And that satisfied me on that one person.
Okay.
And then the other person, I sent an email and hopefully you all were able to get that, but the rest of it, I didn't have any concerns on.
Okay. So we'll go over the content of that email when we're discussing that person.
Thank you.
And we'll consider it.
So I will just listen for the questions and comments from the floor and then I will, I'll get some rest.
Sounds like a plan. All right, so, okay, so next point on the agenda, we'll go back to the original agenda, which is questions and comments from the floor. Do we have a list?
Well, it's her name's first and then my name's.
Oh, okay.
I'm not really worried about the order. Why don't you speak first? Okay. I'm just going to stand because that way I can see.
First, could you introduce yourself, please?
My name is Katiri Basar. I live in Kanjahari. I have for almost all of my life. I have two kids who go to school here. Johnny is in, going into second grade. Alex is going into fifth grade. The school is why I live in Kanjahari. And I'm really not great at remembering everything I'm going to say and actually saying it. So I wrote it in a letter and I made some copies. So if you guys want to like share that, refer to it later, that's fine too. I think there's like seven copies, so. My concern is my daughter's class, fourth grade moving into fifth grade, the behavior issues in that class are horrendous, for lack of a better word. The kids, for the minor things, they swear, they interrupt class, they do all of the things that fourth grade kids do. However, there's also kids who are having tantrums, meltdowns, throwing objects, the classes have to be evacuated. And I have spoken with, this year, her teacher was Mrs. Flannery.
Excuse me a second. Since we're talking about some kids and so forth, I think we probably should adjourn to executive session so we can feel more free to discuss.
Okay, that's fine.
So do I hear a motion?
Yeah.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
All in. Stay, okay, so excuse, excuse you. I'd like to ask Jen and Stacy to please stay since you're both.
So my name is Patty Prime and I work here at school. I just have a little quick question. I wasn't going to speak tonight, but I just had a question that popped into my head about the SMART Board techno, or the SMART Technology Grant and where are we on that? And did you approve the one-on-one computers with kids or, I don't know if anything went through approval process. I know it was up for a vote one time, it got put to a different meeting and I just didn't know where that was anymore because I missed a few meetings. That was my question. Do you want me to answer it?
Please.
We will be reconvening the tech committee to look at how to implement the one-to-one and put together the whole plan. The missing piece right now that the committee will have to grapple with is the support piece. It will do no good to give every child a computer if we have no support on how to use it, which is different than the, does it work?
Right.
So that's the piece that the committee will have to chew on so that they can, we can put that plan back together, take out some of the things that the board had suggested and in substitute in the one-to-one.
Okay, so you approved one-to-one? That's where you're going or you haven't decided yet?
That's where, no, that's where, that's the work that the committee will do to submit it, to submit the SMART Schools plan.
All right, thank you.
As I recall, as I recall, we as a board asked for that to be investigated, right?
Yeah.
To see that we could get to that point.
And the tradition, and the structure within schools to do that is a technology committee and then there is also a technology plan that'll all fold into in addition to the SMART Schools piece.
Yes.
Okay, so seeing all the speakers, we'll move to the report section of the agenda.
Can you introduce our student, Mark?
Oh. Why don't you introduce yourself?
Oh, hello, I'm Danielle Monk. I'm a senior, obviously. What else do you want to know?
Well, I can just say welcome and thank you for volunteering to do this.
Thank you.
Yes, welcome to the board.
Thank you.
I was wondering why you were sitting here.
I just, I just came to relax, you know.
I didn't like the name on you, right?
Really, thank, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, the first point on the reports is community education program. Do we have an attachment for that? So who reported to give this report?
You can. This will be, is that still in what screen? The what screen? Oh, okay, yes, all right.
It's okay, I have it up. You don't need to try to get it on screen for me.
Well, it's very pretty, so if you can pull it up.
I know, but I, it's.
How many of these people? I have it. I will show it to them. I'll start my computer in a moment. So.
I have it.
Is our first.
I'm going to unplug you from here, Scott, but you'll be on the.
Okay.
All right. Who are you? So let me, just as a first year of community education running, I had a goal of 10 and I was really close and then I had someone back up last minute, so I unfortunately made it to nine programs, so that's okay. Well, we'll get there next year. We had a great partnership with Arcell though, that was very exciting. We did quite a few tech ambassador events where we had students from our CSI program go down and work with individuals on basic technology. So with some, we had kids that were set up Facebook for people. We had a very tense moment where we moved over one person's email account to another one. It was very tense because we couldn't lose everything. But even to one person wanting help on a board from Anger Berth, so it was, it was rewarding. It was a very fun experience. I think not only did the individuals that were participating, but our students also got a lot out of those events and we're going to continue those into next year. We also did holiday crafts through, through at the Arcell Center and that was, that was fun. We had a lot of the community members come. Rachel came and made some crafts with us and, oh, and Leah. So we're a mess. It was, that was a great time, a lot of variety of crafts from making cards to little snowmen and ornaments, so it was fantastic. And we, again, are hoping to do that and we like to expand that into the fall as well and the fall just got away from the issue, or the spring.
Was that a one-time event or?
Yeah, the holiday crafts, it was a one-time. There was four different stations and people for, you know, $5 could come and make each of the crafts, so it was, it was very successful. And we had people just coming off the streets too, so that was cool. Then we had knitting that turned into something far more. It turned into an extended knitting club.
Yes, it is.
Defensive driving, I just contracted with the woman at the Schultz Agency to do a couple more classes next year. We're looking at some evening classes as well as a Saturday to meet more people's needs. It was very successful. We had about 25 people here one Saturday for that class, so that was fantastic. CPR and first aid, we did that down at East Hill with Mr. Studdel, who did that class year was smaller. We start with large numbers. We have a lot of, we do an enrollment. People can sign up online. A lot of people sign up and then we get about a. A lot of people sign up, and then we get about a half those that come, but that's okay. People are still coming, so that's fantastic. Self-defense was very exciting, a lot of people were very angry and took it out on the nice police officers from Amsterdam. So that was a good time.
And no one got arrested?
Uh, no, not yet, I mean, I don't, they don't drive in Amsterdam, but no one got arrested here. And we would like to do that again, some people actually asked for a more advanced version. I, they might have to bring it back up, I don't know. So, but that was a, that was a great class. And the SAT prep was fantastic, it was well received. Did you attend that one?
No.
You can give me no information on that thing. But I got great feedback from the students. And first of all, the students would be like, it was great. And we're talking about 7:00 to 8:30 on Wednesday nights. And the fact that they were still excited about the next day, and it was such a great class, was very exciting. So, um, so we'll can, I've already reached out to do one again in preparation for our June 2nd offering of the SATs in the spring. So, um, as a most part, it was a positive experience. I would like to get more people involved. I'm still looking for someone to do a cooking class, I will come for you. I'm still looking for that. I am reaching out to people just to see what other offerings are out there. Crafts, we have people that are like, yeah, I wanna, I wanna be a part of it, and I'm getting them to solidify dates. So I'm gonna start a little bit earlier this year to make sure that we get there. Total expenditures was really low, it was about $3,000. We had a lot of people offer, um, offer their services. We had Joe Lenz, Dina Lenz's husband, did it, just did Notary Public class. One woman showed up, but she had been asking for it all year, and he, he said at first, it was a minimum of eight that he would. And we had one person, he ran the class anyway. So I, kudos to him, but he didn't want to be paid for it. So I keep sending him the form just to make it happen. But, um, so a lot of people are just donating their time. And the 3,000, almost of it, went to our portion of the SAT prep class. And, um, we spoke last time, I believe, Mr. Ferguson suggested that we pay for the class. But again, as long as we have kids, they're more likely to come if there's a financial upfront, and then gladly return their checks at the end. But I think these are some great opportunities, and we're, I'm always looking for suggestions. So please pass it my way, not just a suggestion, but a person that would actually like to teach my class as well, would be great. So, um, and the last slide there are just some things that we are looking at. Looking to partner with Catholic charities next year to do some, they do like parenting type style classes. We haven't really solidified what that will look like yet, because we're gonna try to parent to what we see as a big need here, as well as things that will get people in. So we're working on that. We already did the Notary Public class, I'm already one down, huh huh. Internet safety class we would like to do, so those things around appropriate use of the internet, we're contracting with the SafeLeads for that one. Therapy dog training, we keep on talking about that one. I was hoping to do it more this summer, but that didn't work out, because that's really a knocked-out door thing, or Gary would kill me, I'll dog here. And a photography class potentially, because that seems to be very popular, so I'm trying to get a local photographer that will come and do that for us. So just some ideas potentially, like I said, if you have an idea, and more importantly, someone that would like to teach it, let me know. We can definitely expand this.
I thought one of the things that we had mentioned in a board meeting. I thought it was around conscious discipline somehow, but I can't remember the specific that we saw. I wanted an idea to put in the community education.
It was a book talk, and I believe that Michelle did that, correct? She kind of reached out.
She did one book talk, yes.
Yes, she did a book talk that didn't get wrapped in within the community ad, but that is definitely something that we could expand upon now that we kind of have our feet wet.
And the other suggestion is, just thinking about our community, maybe something around financial management or budgeting. Or something like that might be a really good topic to potentially put in there.
Um, I was actually earlier today looking up like banks and people that could perhaps assist us there. There was, uh, Dina Lenz has suggested looking at more of like that financial management in terms of going to college and so on. That type of work is a fall, so, but expanding that and talking about balancing your checkbook and those basics, though, I think would be valuable, yeah?
Yeah. In regards to the SAT prep.
Yeah.
I would like to make sure that as we look at that for next year, that we are consistent in how we do that across all of the participants.
Oh, yes. Are you saying?
The fee structure.
Yep, we have a fee structure now, um, that was based on free or reduced lunch, but then, are you saying in terms of reimbursement?
I understand, but what I'm suggesting is that that be made available using the same process to all students, not on some graduated ski fee schedule. But however we decide that we're, if we decide that we want some minimum thing of a $20 come in. But the students, so that they show up and the school pays for it. You know, that we handle that consistently across all students, and how we manage that.
Absolutely.
Okay, any other questions or comments? I have a question, how are we publicizing these classes once we arrive at them?
We are, um, a lot through Facebook, I've done signs, colorful signs, I've done, um, we push it out through our social media. So through our app, we've pushed several out. We've also put, um, what was website, the website, thank you, the website is, uh, are the, are the big ones right now. And word of mouth, a lot of times I'm using as well, that tends to go further. I'm finding that signs are not all that, no one, they're white noise, so. But a lot on Facebook has gotten this lot.
Anything I would suggest we consider moving forward is getting to church leaders, so that they can address their parishioners.
That's a great idea.
This is certainly something that would be of interest and useful.
Yeah, cool, yeah.
That's a captive audience.
Yes, absolutely.
Can I ask another question about your cooking? In your note, you said struggling to find interest from instructors. Can you elaborate on that? Maybe we can give some assistance.
Absolutely, I have, well, avoiding names, I've reached out to a lot of like local gurus of cooking, we should say. And I hit a wall with three individuals saying, yes, we're very excited. And then personal things happened within their lives, the last one, like, I can't help you out, this is like, this isn't the right time for me. So, I don't know, if you have suggestions of other people that I haven't hunted?
I would suggest that there's a whole culinary program that has people that teach it at Cobleskill.
Oh, there is, and I, you know what? Ironically, I was looking at FM too, because, that's ultimate sun. So, yes, so that is, yes, and I, I did not think of Cobleskill, I was thinking FM, but excellent. I will reach out to them too.
Does most professors have to do some community service as a part of their role?
I didn't realize that, I can totally exploit that.
Their sons might go to school here.
And even better, and you can send me the number.
Facebook.
Perfect. Alright, thank you, that was great.
Okay, anything else? Alright, moving right on. Okay, the next thing is superintendent. Report.
Just three, three items this evening. One, just as you know, summertime is a prime time for filling vacant positions. So we have on this evening's agenda a variety of recommendations for the board, including elementary music, high school art, school social worker, some coaches. So those you've all seen. And we continue to work on those positions and, and work on interviewing, so that we can fill those positions before the start of the school year. The big news of the summer so far was that last Thursday or Friday of last week, we were informed that our community eligibility program application was accepted. So we will be able to feed and offer every child in the district breakfast and lunch at no cost, beginning in the start of the school year. This is huge, it's really huge, and we're very excited about that. So Mrs. Don Brody and Mr. Myers, our communication specialists, are developing the necessary communications to inform our families in our community. There are going to be several ways that they are going to communicate, newspaper, letter home. We're going to ask the principals to include something in their back-to-school letters using social media. And we're going to keep hitting it and hitting it and hitting it in a variety of different ways up until the start of the school year. So we're very excited about that. So we'll be watching for that publicity to start, there's a whole schedule that they have developed. So that's, that's a big kudos, and my thanks, I think our thanks to Lori Don and Brody for her work on that application. Um, the third thing is, it's the middle of summer. If you see any one of our custodians or buildings and ground folks, please give them a big thanks. They are working really hard to get the buildings in shape for the start of the school year. We resealed the high, the high school driveway this summer as part of a regular maintenance plan. But we also built into it, paving the path between the high school and East Hill Middle School complex. Many students and staff use that, and it, and it's muddy sometimes, it's snowy sometimes. We had a wheelchair stuck out there one time, a few years ago. So we're really excited that that path is now going to be safe for people to use, it is a well-used path. So that's just something we're going to be able to do. So those are the big highlights so far.
Any questions, comments?
Who, who did the ceiling? It hurts, right?
Harton there.
Alright, I'll talk to you later about, you know, how they did it.
You have to, you have to, you have to, you have to reach out to you.
Yeah, I was just, I was curious to know the, the cost and, you know, the bidding process, but.
Mark?
We'll get that information and brief to everybody, okay?
I just have one thing, I'm not gonna be able to make it till the executive session. But when, when you talk about the openings, the, um, tonight, those that are not 100%, in other words, are not 100% FTE. If, if you could make sure that you, you discuss that, so that we're clear the workload equals the percentage FTE that they're, they're getting. Okay?
Yep.
Thank you.
Okay, um, my computer decided it needed to update and turn it off and turn it on, so I need to look at someone else's. Now, just. It's making noise, is this coming? It had, it put a big thing up in the middle, I couldn't read it, so I had to do it. And it wouldn't let me sign off. Okay, so we'll go now to approvals. Um, we have the minutes for July 8th, June 8th, I'm sorry.
Is it okay if I sign off here?
Yep.
Okay.
Have a safe trip home.
Have a safe, enjoy your meantime, bye Scott.
Bye.
Okay, um, do I have a motion to approve the minutes?
I'll make the motion.
Okay, any discussion or questions? Alrighty, all in favor?
Aye.
Posed. Extentions. I have the two. Budget transfer schedule, number 13. Do I hear a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second?
I'll second.
Okay, any questions or comments? Okay, um, seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Posed. Extentions. Proved. Hey, bills, general, federal, and school lunch. Do I hear a motion? Second?
I'll second.
Okay, uh, any questions or comments? Okay, seeing none, um, all in favor?
Aye.
Posed. Stained. Motion carries. Treasurers report. Can I have a motion?
Second.
Any questions or comments?
No.
Seeing none, um, all in favor?
Aye.
Posed. Stained. Transportation contracts. Do I have a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Second?
I'll second.
Any questions or comments?
These were both for summer, summer only.
Any other questions or comments? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Posed. Stained. Okay. Oh, come back, come back. Okay, credit card approvals. Can I have a motion? Second?
I'll second.
Okay, um, let me just give a little bit of background on this. As you may remember, Scott at a previous meeting talked about some concerns about the, this is a credit card and the credit limit and so forth and so on. That's why we got a couple, you know, we put this on the agenda to discuss that, and also got some policies from a couple of other school districts, just to reflect on it. And, um, so, um, the, the floor is open for discussion. What?
One of the questions was about procedure.
Oh, okay.
And Leah's here tonight to give some information on how the procedure currently works, which was one of the first questions.
Okay. Is that agreeable?
Sure. Go ahead, please.
Yeah, I wasn't sure what exactly Scott's questions were, because I wasn't at the last meeting, but something about approvals and credit limits. And looking at our policy, which is the first tab on there, it was done back in 2010, when we first got the credit card. And it, it does say that, and we do get purchase orders, Debbie approves a purchase order, the purchase order says it's gonna be purchased on the school credit card. So we are following the policy. And we spoke today, and we think that the policy should be looked at again, updated, maybe, maybe some stuff added, some language taken out. So we also included two other schools' policies for their credit cards. Everybody does it different, like, we have Blaldens on here, it's three pages long. I think what they do is they give, they actually give out credit cards to employees, we don't do that. There's only a couple of people that even have one in their name, so maybe we should update the policy to reflect that. Not the person's name, but like, you know, the superintendent, the principal, the director of buildings and grounds. So I, I think we should update the policy to reflect what we do and to make it better.
Do you have any thoughts about what ways it might be better?
We'd have to look at the other two policies that we got from other schools and what we're currently doing. And there, we could establish a credit limit to each card, but we only have an overall of about $20,000. And you also asked a question about rewards, there isn't any, I looked it up. We don't spend enough, we have to spend like $150,000 a year. There's no way we spend that. And then at that point, then you would get like hotel discounts and airfare. But we don't, we don't spend enough, so.
So a couple of suggestions would be around, in the policy, perhaps revising it, to talk about the positions that would hold or have access to the credit card. As well as if there was, if you wanted to put in an individual limit per card. That would answer Scott's question about what's the upper limit for approval. The approvals all go through the general, um, purchase requisition process anyway. And the way our structure is set up with the CBO is I have to approve tho- I approve those once they're put in. So it's the same process we use for everything else. But those would be the two things we might want to consider in the, you might want to consider.
And when you said 20,000, that's 20,000 for the year?
It's 20,000 for the whole card at that time, so it's just like any other credit card you got, you know, your personal card, probably says $10,000 or something like that. So we only have 20,000 until it's paid, so, and we have never, there hasn't been any purchase that's over like 2,000.
Another option would be as we do the quarterly reports, perhaps we could break that, if the board was interested, you could also see what those expenditures just were on the credit card. They're part of the bills and warrants anyway, but that would be a separate. So that would be, that would just be another option if you're interested. So that would be, that would just be another option if you're interested. Primarily, we use it when people go on conferences for food, which has a limit, or transportation. Sometimes if...
There's stuff that comes up.
Stuff that comes up that a credit card is, facilitates the purchase of it more quickly. Sometimes Gary needs some materials for repairs or things like that.
Yeah, a lot of companies that some teachers want supplies from only do online. So you have to go online and usually I have to do it, so...
Any other questions or comments? I, my, my own feeling is because a question has been raised about it, I think it would probably be helpful in our monthly financial report to just have a listing of credit card expenditures on that credit card each month, just so we could look at that separately and discuss if there might need to be any changes in the proceed, you know, the ways in which it's used. Because right now, there's no separate accounting of that. It's all just an abnormal expenditures and warrants and so forth.
Yeah, it's there.
So I think, at least for a while, it might be useful. And I have, from what I understand, Leah, it would not be a big deal to produce that? Is that correct?
No.
Okay, so, um, what were...
Yeah, right now it's grouped into, um, on the, the general fund treasurer's report. It's grouped into other numbers that say credit. We could just break it out on there or be more detail, like this is the amount and this amount was for supplies or this amount was for conferences.
I think initially that might be helpful, just to have a specific report that we could look at and so that would kind of clear up any questions and give us a way to monitor it if, just so if anyone has concerns they could raise them. Is that agreeable?
Sure.
So before we go over to the whole policy, we could just implement that, you know, as a, into... Okay, um, so do we really need to approve anything because that's already existing policy?
Yes.
We do?
Yes, you just need to, it was on the, um, the reorganization that Mrs. Grimshaw is the approver of that, so...
Okay, so that we would have to approve. But then we could still bring it up later as a policy question?
Yes.
Okay. So there's a motion, I, I would ask for a, set us a...
We have a motion.
There is a motion? Okay, that, that would be approved as the guardian of the card.
Approve that.
Or however they present it.
Right, yes.
Um, do I have a motion? We did that already?
You did.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Stained? Okay, thank you. Next is agreement with Mayfield for shared athletic director. Just a little background, it looked like we might be losing Brian Dunn, but then he's still staying with us. See, you know, we was hoping for some other job to come through, which was, we were very happy about, I'm sorry to say, for Brian Dunn. So, um, guy to motion?
Motion to approve.
Second?
Second.
Okay, questions? Comments?
I had one question, I think I know the answer to this. This is, it's a straight 50-50 with Mayfield in that salary that's listed there, not really salary, that's the, our portion with benefits and...
But he, his hours, his hours are...
Sure. Oh, okay, exactly. Okay, that's, all right. All right, that's what I was thinking, thank you.
Okay, um, any other questions, comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Stained? Okay. Agreement with Realville for shared music teacher. I'll go here, motion?
Make the motion.
Second?
I'll second.
Okay, any discussion, questions? Comments? This again is, you know, we have the shared employee hours.
Same situation, okay.
Hours in Realville.
That was going to be my question, right? I'll take that based off that.
Okay, there's nothing different than we've come to the last year. Any other questions or comments? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Stained? Passes? Benetec. So this is, um, the first of all, can I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second?
Second.
Okay.
That's all right.
Okay, um, so can we give some background on this?
Yep, um, I believe this is the third, isn't it?
It has been, yes.
This is part of the Affordable Care Act compliance that we have to do. We contract with Benetec to do all the tracking of all of our employees to, um, they have to do with health insurance. And then they issue, they take care of issuing all the necessary paperwork at the end of the year. So it's something that we have to do to be in compliance with the Affordable Care Act. And Mark, you had some questions about what happens if this is repealed or changed or...
Well, obviously, because the ACA is up in the air right now. And this is, I think, a two-year contract, if I remember correctly.
Yeah.
And so my concern is that if the ACA is repealed, for example, and we still bound by the payment agreement, and I think there should be some escape clause for us.
Yeah, and we just looked at...
Should, should something of that nature happen, either now or if they don't let it die, you know, they'll bring it up again in six months or a year. And so that was the question.
Yeah, on page 14, there you go. 14 or 14, yeah. It says at the end, number three. Says you can upon mutual agreement get out within 90 days notice, with a 90-day notice. And also, when I asked them about this, I called, I called them, instead of paying upfront, we just, we can just pay month to month and then if something changes...
But this, but this seems to say that we'd have to pay for 90 days.
Yeah, but, yeah, I'm thinking if it does go away, like say, um, it ends December, we're still going to have to probably do all the forms and everything. So then you're looking at March till all those forms go out. So that's what I'm thinking, it might happen with this, and then we would just not pay.
All right, so that, and they're good with the month-to-month approach?
If you go back up, Patty, can you go back up to the top of that, just that same page? Underneath it says the fee will be billed monthly in 12 equal amounts. Go right through it.
Yeah, and that's what they said when I asked them. They said, just don't pay upfront, don't pay the whole thing for the year.
Okay, any other questions? You all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Stained? Next point is, oops, Special Ed Solutions Agreement. Any other some background on that?
Yes, we have.
Huh? Oh, that, that does have to be a motion for a... No, that's good. The hair, second? I was doing pretty good up to this point.
This is well, this is... This is equally as fun as Benetec. This has to do with our Medicaid, um, and it basically oversees our Medicaid eligibility of students, um, ensures that our paperwork is appropriate, is submitted to Medicaid in the 12 different forms that they require, um, so they oversee all of that. And to answer your question about the, if something were to happen to the Affordable Care Act, it's the same 90-day, and we pay monthly, so...
So, obviously, if they change the ACA, Medicaid might go, certainly the school part, it would be one of the first things dropped apparently, which would be a disaster. That's what we're facing if they go forward. So any other questions or comments?
So, just help me understand, generally, how does this, this work? You know, because I'm not familiar with this, so...
In what way?
Like, so, um, you're talking about this is a online or is it a, you know, what, what, you know, how exactly does it work?
There's a couple of steps that we had to change once the Medicaid system all changed over last year in March. Okay, so everything changed over and now we actually are contracted through a company frontline who does our IP direct, they do Medicaid direct as well. So all of the notes and everything that our, our related service providers speech, in our case, speech OTPT.
Okay.
They get put in, into that system where the, the information is housed and translated into the appropriate systems.
All right.
Special Ed Solutions takes that information, ensures that first of all, that we have students that are eligible for Medicaid, so they go through all of those lists, ensure that they clean up our data so that it can then be submitted to Medicaid for our reimbursement.
Okay.
That's how it works.
Perfect, so the 350 a month is just a flat fee?
Yeah. Yep. For their services.
Oh.
Yes.
Nice.
And they are, we are constantly calling them and talking to them so they earn their 350s to make sure that we are in the...
Yeah, no, me did.
So that we are up to date and it's a small company, but they've been very...
Yeah, I'm imagining in the long run, you're actually saving money, time and energy.
Well, and you're ensuring maximum reimbursement.
Yeah.
Versus if honestly we were muddling through, there's so many, you, you have to really be up on it hour by hour, so...
Yeah, no, right. Good, thank you.
Yep.
Any other questions, comments? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Stained? Mary Eugene Bassett Hospital Agreement.
Motion to approve.
Thank you. Second?
I'll second.
Any questions or comments or, or first can we have any, some background on it?
This is our annual contract with Bassett for the things we discussed prior. They provide medical services. They also provide, um, appropriate medical personnel to act as the doctor in char, or doctor representative, excuse me, of the committee on special education. They provide consultation services, they do infectious disease with us, provision of educational resources, and if we needed them to, but we don't review and sign orders for OTPT or speech. This is an ongoing contract that we've had with them for more years than I've been here.
Do they, um, do they come here to the district or do you just go right down to the kids, go right down to the...
No, for physicals, they come here.
Okay.
And there is an additional per charge for the physicals and we gave you the information of what that was last year. And that is part of our board policy.
A lot of kids just get it under their normal position.
Yeah.
So we don't have an inordinate number that we're actually, that we're actually paying them bucks for. Yep.
Is this, is Bassett the group that we have to check with concussion?
Yes, for athletic purposes. Yeah, we will, if the student chooses not to have their own doctor, do it checked, but they also have to be checked by Bassett. That's part of the Medicaid, that's part of it, yeah.
Okay.
Any other questions, comments? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Stained? Motion carries? Gervin Enfrazo, um, this is our standard annual agreement with, with our attorney law firm. I don't, is there anything shit different this year?
No.
Okay, um, can I ask for a motion? I think so, can I have a motion? Second?
I'll second.
Okay. Um, any other questions or comments? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Stained? Vaccine program agreement with Rite Aid.
Second.
This is Robert. This, we, um, our nurses found, we decided to contract with them because previously we were going through Bassett and through Dr. Riley and we were charged $30 per vaccine. Rite Aid, by bringing them in, will go right through our insurance, so we're not paying twice. So essentially, you all, every person through our insurance gets their free vaccine, I guess we'll call it. So you get your vaccine and what we were doing is we were providing the vaccine here, but then we were being charged for it. So it was almost like $60 for the same vaccine. So by doing it through Rite Aid, they come, they're actually very accommodating, they already have dates picked out as, as long as this is approved. Um, so the teachers will get their vaccines appropriate, they just show them their card and boom, 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 stuff. So there's no, none of the extra cost.
Great. Okay, any questions or comments?
Are teachers required to get, no, it's up to students, up to them and they can go and get them?
Yep, they sign up, we have them come, um, they usually spend a day in both buildings and then teachers just sign up beforehand saying, you know, I want a vaccine and, and a lot of times we'll have like a, an eight or something, just could go pop and get your vaccine and then have x-class, so, yeah. So it's pretty convenient.
Any other questions, comments? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Stained? Motion carries? Full-on Community Action Agency, random understanding.
Motion to approve.
I'll second.
Is this ensuring that our students who have started?
I'm sorry?
Our students who have started through, that's through full-on connection, um, that we follow the CPSE rules. So that once, once we follow, we follow through that, ensure that the students with disabilities have their appropriate accommodate, but in most times services, related services, which we do.
Any questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Warwin's Tutorial Contract. Do we hear a motion?
Make the motion.
Second?
I'll second.
Okay.
Any of our students that go to programs, um, for an extended time, we, um, they must receive two-year services. So if your, um, is it one to two hours depending on your age, and we contract with them to provide those services.
Questions? Comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Stained? Motion carries? Wildwood Agreement for Services, I have a motion.
This is a contract for a student who is in placement at Wildwood, soon won't be having this potential, slowly aging out, but is doing very well.
Any questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Stained? Motion carries? Okay, can I have a motion to, um, essentially to adjutant a session? All in favor? Okay, thank you very much for coming, Patty and...
We take like two, three?
Okay.
Yeah, get it until I submit my... I mean, the 75,000, yeah. They have to have, Leah, I went and told them to have to have.
No.
I just put it in there.
No, I know.
Seriously. Before it goes to that email.
Yeah.
Four and they're all over the map. So I'm just going to fill it up. You're getting it, you still... They can email me and say you don't care for John.
It's not really the one kid or the one kids.
But I don't have one book.
So, yeah.
I, I know, and I'm sorry, that's what I was saying. You don't want, I'll use Leo out of the library.
I'm here tomorrow.
You were just saying the goal for that...
I'm here until I have to go do that.
Right. Read, will you read that? Right. Will you guys read that real quick and just see? I have to write my geometry, see if the scores change. Yes, okay.
I'd like one of us to be there at least.
Right, right, right.
I don't want to put it off again if we don't have to.
And, and this thing is...
I was very happy to be going away, but it was a nice surprise.
Yes, right.
We just go it overnight.
No, I'm trying to...
I think it's true.
Thank you. Yeah, I have to, three kids who have failed before that.
I did.
I have to, um, probably leave around 11 to 45 because the ice cream...
Come to a meeting unless you have to...
I need to get my ice cream then. All right, there's going to be a lot of...